Good evening and welcome to our Murfreesboro City School Board meeting. We will ask you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance and while we're standing, we'll have recognition at a moment of silence and remembrance of our board member Dennis Rehneer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for
Thank you, you may be seated. Would may I call on Mayor Tommy Bragg for our opening ceremony?
Good evening and Madam Chair, thank you for having me and your school board members and certainly to have Ron Washington as our council representative to the school board. It's a particular honor and pleasure today to come and honor you as school board members. On behalf of our city council and the citizens of Murfreesboro and certainly Rutherford County folks appreciate what you do also because we all live in the county. It is a pleasure and many of you realize that we have redecorated and done some construction work in the council chambers and I didn't realize that y'all had gone on on your own and done some extensive redecoration. I'm sure at great expense too. No expense was spared, that's fine. But it is a pleasure to come and recognize this School Board Appreciation Week. Certainly we have outstanding school board members in our city and certainly the county does too and we certainly appreciate the fact that you volunteered to spend your time going through an election and to get elected and then to serve for a four-year period. And I appreciate each and every one of you for the efforts that you make on behalf of our schoolchildren, on behalf of our parents, on behalf of our administrator and staff and those who support our school system. It means a lot to us to have someone caring, someone there every day looking in to make sure everything is going very well. And I know your school director, Ms. Gilbert, appreciates your efforts and your input and listens every day and I'm certain that it's a shared listening because we don't get anything done unless we cooperate with each other and I know that y'all do an excellent job. And so it is my pleasure to recognize School Board Appreciation Week. An excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of our communities and to the economic development of our state and whereas school board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision-makers diligently working to meet the challenges of a dynamic world while ensuring that every child receives the services needed for a quality education. Whereas school board members recognize the importance of improvement and progress in education and accept the responsibilities involved with implementing these initiatives and whereas the men and women elected by the people as members of our local school board deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to public education in Tennessee. Now therefore I, Tommy Bragg, Mayor of Murfreesboro, do hereby proclaim this week of January 22nd through 28th, 2012, School Board Appreciation Week in Murfreesboro, Tennessee and I urge all of our citizens to join me in this worthy observance. And I'm gonna present this to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. It's always a pleasure to be here and I really do appreciate your efforts. You make us proud every day. Thank you again very much and enjoy your School Board Appreciation Week because one week out of the year is not enough to thank you for what you do. Thank you.
While we have you, I'd just like to thank you for your tremendous support of the school system in our city and for the council's support. We've had nothing but solid, day-in, day-out support from your office and from the council for years and without that, we wouldn't have a system. And I'm just really appreciative of that and I've really enjoyed working with you.
Well, I'll miss you but thank you, Dr. Andrews, I appreciate the sentiments and certainly Mr. Washington takes an awfully good care of us, of the council and sharing with you, so thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And thank you for giving your time tonight to come out and share this week with us.
It's a great pleasure. Thank you.
While we're on the subject Chairman Wade, Chairwoman Wade, I just wanted to take a moment and thank all the teachers and principals and kids for all this lovely, all these goodies that you've left us. They're so fun looking, they're so bright and colorful and I'm gonna be taking pictures of all these wonderful posters and things before I leave and I wanna thank you for that time and trouble. It's very touching, it's truly very touching and the books that you're donating to the library in our name, I really appreciate that. I saw that mine has an Irish theme and I'm gonna be working on that accent so I can come read it somewhere. And I just wanted to thank you all for that time and trouble.
And I'm a shark. I love it though, this is just my favorite thing, having more books in the library. I love to read, I love for kids to get to have even more books to read.
Right.
Okay, then we will get down to business and I will seek a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda. So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, good evening, communications.
Thank you all for what you do. On behalf of the teachers and the children and the administrators, they very much appreciate you and I'm delighted that they have shown that to you. The colors are great, so that's pretty cool. It's my pleasure to introduce a friend of mine, she is a professor of educational leadership at Middle Tennessee State University and she's been involved for several years in a friendship project with Naruto University in Japan and so I'd like for Dr. Jane Williams to come forward, please.
Good evening. I would like to introduce to you two colleagues of mine at Naruto University of Education in Naruto, Japan. I have with me Professor Yumiko Ono and Professor Gerard Marchesol. They have brought a couple of their teacher education students to Murfreesboro this week. Over quite a few of the past years, we have traded kids for weeks at a time between the teacher ed program at Naruto and MTSU's teacher ed program. And when they come here and our kids go there, they spend time in the schools observing elementary teaching, do a little bit of teaching themselves, and they get home stays with Murfreesboro City School teachers and that's what they're doing right now, so they're out doing that while I'm, and we're presenting to you about the program. There are Scales this week, one of their favorite places to go, and I've asked Yumiko if she'd tell you a little bit about what the kids are doing while they're here.
Thank you very much, good evening and then thank you very much for having us here. And then this is the president from the school. And the two students were placed in the Scales from yesterday and they're spending three days until tomorrow. And tomorrow from 10 o'clock, one of the students is presenting a lesson to the grade six students and then in the afternoon from 1 o'clock, another student is giving a lesson to the grade three students. And in our country, and I think it's almost everywhere, that teacher education students are challenged and expected to be prepared for the diversity and multiculturalism. So that's part of the reason that we brought two students and to place in your schools. And just two days passed but the students are picking up a lot of things. They found out the teachers at the Scales are using, each teacher is using their own unique ways, different and unique ways to reach all students. And then they are using the time very effectively and the technology and they use all possible means and measures to reach the students. And there are two students that are already starting to talk about reflecting on what they have seen and also that talking about how they can use or borrow what they have seen here to, when they start to teach in their own classrooms. So this is very exciting programs and then thank you very much for your assistance and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wade.
I just wanted to share for a minute of how excited we are, excuse me, that Keiko and Shinobu have come to our school and third grade and sixth grade and I got a little inside information on the lesson for tomorrow, so I might see if I can get my name spelt in Japanese, but anyway, the children are very excited about tomorrow and one of the host families is two houses down from me, so I've been getting a lot, lot of information, a lot of fun at talking about education in Japan and talking about education here in the United States and in Murfreesboro, so it's been a great opportunity and I hope that we get to do it in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Andrews. Dr. Gilbert, Mrs. Phillips, will come in?
No, it wasn't me, it was Ms. Smith.
I just wanna thank you for coming, I think that the exchanges like this are wonderful for the children to learn so much about the people in your, in your country and about education and for the teachers to learn from each other, just like you said, to steal ideas. So thank you for coming and for sharing your students with us, I really appreciate it.
Very much appreciate Scales hosting too, that's, that's been a real thrill and Jane, thank you for your continuing work and Yumiko, it's good to see you again. We have an announcement, Discovery School at Reese Rogers has been nominated as a blue ribbon school and so they are in the process of getting together information and getting that to the federal government. We should hear something in a few months, I think, on that, but certainly it is quite an honor for them to be nominated and to have reached this point in the process. Also in association with the Discovery School, we have Kristi Mall, who is a teacher there. She received first place in the teacher division of the Tennessee Education Association, Technology Education Association. And also her, her student, Gail Manaska, won first place. Kristi won for What Tennessee Means To Me, she did a video. And then Gail, the student, won first place for her story about moving to Tennessee, so this is quite an honor to receive a state award from the Technology Education Association of Tennessee. We also received word this afternoon, as a matter of fact, that Deborah Pascal with Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Department, of course, they are tremendous partner of ours and Deborah has been working very closely with our schools, but she applied for a grant and received a $47,787 grant for the fund project. This will be a project, this year we had a first version of that project at Mitchell Nielsen Elementary Primary and also at Bradley, but we will be expanding that, we'll continue to work with those schools but be expanding to Casey Lane and Black Fox. This is a project that joins really MTSU, Parks and Rec, and Murfreesboro City Schools in working on eliminating obesity and also eliminating nature deficits, so we're very excited about that. And those are your communications.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Under consent items, if we could get a motion, if there are no questions about any of the items, we'll ask for a motion.
Will we approve the consent item?
Second. There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Action items, Dr. Gilbert?
Your first action item is approval of the 2012-2013 school calendar and before I begin, I really want to thank again this year the Murfreesboro Education Association and the President Natalie Hopkins, they are tremendous partner of ours and I really appreciate their work on this. We don't always agree and can't always get the days exactly right, but we get them pretty doggone close to what they ask for and so we appreciate that. You will notice that you do have the calendar before you, again, we have tried to pair as closely as we can to what the county has. We do have the half-days there, there are a few exceptions about where we match exactly with the county, but we, we are as close, we think, as we can possibly be, so we do have that before you tonight for approval.
Mr. Campbell?
Dr. Gilbert, on the professional learning days?
Yes.
Is there any particular reason why they're on those particular days?
Those match the county days and we try to get them as close as we can to them because we understand that's important for families.
Okay, there are no other questions, is there a motion for the approval of the calendar?
I mean, that we approved the calendar.
Thank you, there's a second. There's a motion and a second, all in favor, board, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I have a comment?
Yes.
I know that yearly, a tremendous amount of work goes into this calendar and I just wanna thank all the people involved in working on this calendar because I know it's, you know, it can be quite a challenge sometimes with the way holidays fall and one thing and another, so.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Next item on the agenda is the, we're looking for approval on district-wide initiatives and request funding from city council. As we discussed in your, in your session a few weeks ago, there are basically four items that we are needing to have reviewed by you and considered for moving on to the city council. Our system has grown and you'll, you'll hear later when I do the report on the attendance and our system has grown over last year, 237 students and this was at the end of December and we've grown more since we've been back in school and we're 189 students above what we had actually projected, so we are a growing district and so we need to make some accommodations for those students. The, I've broken it up into four separate considerations for your review. The first one is for a new West Murfreesboro Elementary School. The estimated cost of the project is $20,950,000. We are looking to construct an 800-capacity school with a core capacity of 1,000 and the scheduled date for completion, that would be in June of 2014 to be ready to open for school year 2014-2015. This, this item is in the city council's improvement plan already, it's been on there for three years and this is, we are right on schedule now for requesting funding on this particular project. So if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them about this.
Mr. Campbell?
We have not acquired land for this yet, am I correct?
That is correct.
So where, we're looking for it to be, what area of the city?
We're looking for it on the west side because of the growth that we've experienced at Scales and Casey Lane and the city has already on the books lots approved for over 800 lots in that area. So we know they haven't pulled permits, but they have had the lots approved, so we know it's coming.
Does that answer for you, Mr. Campbell?
Definitely.
Okay, Ms. Duggan?
I'd just like to share a few things for those listening. Anytime we look at a project like this, we know it's great financial commitment, but we have been discussing for about two years now, a possible school in the near future. We've discussed actually, you know, turning Bellwood back into a regular school and trying to move our preschools other places. We've just, we've looked at empty classrooms in all our buildings. We've talked about rezoning, which no one likes that at all. And I feel, 'cause I was one that said, you know, we're not gonna build a new school till we've used every inch of every other building we have because of the commitment of the money that's involved, but I do feel like that the board's making a wise decision to make this recommendation at this time and I think we've looked at all the options that we have within the city because you provided us with great information about how many empty classrooms we have in every building and we know that Hobgood is needing more space and just a lot of things are happening within the city. So personally, I feel good about a decision at this time. I feel like we have looked at our other options and tried to make good use of what we have and what we will need in the future, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Will you make a clarification that we discussed earlier about which schools these are like?
Sure. The, the size of the school is designed to be similar to Black Fox and Northfield. Those schools are 800-capacity schools. The only difference in what we're proposing here is to have a core facility to handle 1,000 students, so what it, what it means is you have more floor space in your, in your cafeteria, your library, your office, your gymnasium seating and just your basic entrance areas. So, but really it's designed to be the same classroom configuration as what we have presently at Northfield and Black Fox.
Ms. Phillips?
I just wanna take a moment and echo a little more of what Ms. Duggan was saying and say that Murfreesboro City School has had a history that I'm proud of, of being proactive in dealing with growth instead of reactive and I think we are doing that now. We see how many lots are going to have houses on it and houses have kids and, you know, if we build it, they're certainly going to come, so we wanna be ready for those kids and that's something I'm, I'm proud that we've always done in the past and that we're able to do today with the help of the city council, so.
Okay, Ms. Anderson. Were you wanting to take them separately for a motion or?
As, Ms. Baker, should they be spit, done separately or together?
I think it would be best to do them separately.
Okay. Randy?
We will entertain a motion for the appropriation of asking the council for funds for the new West Murfreesboro Elementary School. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ridley.
Thank you. The second item on this list is the Hobgood School addition and renovation. The project is estimated at a little over $4 million. What we're needing to do is add some additional classrooms and a teacher work area. That school, since it's an older design, doesn't have a teacher work area at all right now and we need more seating in the cafeteria, the dining room area, it's the smallest area now and by doing this addition now, we can handle some of those things. There is no more space at Hobgood at all. There are, every classroom is full, every closet's used, every nook and cranny is used in this school, so we really need to have this added to it as a phase one. Phase two of this will be to upgrade the, the front entrance of the building, to include a new office suite, a new media center, which is the library, meeting rooms, a new kitchen area and renovation of the existing media center and turning into classrooms, we add some additional classroom space when we do that, and to finalize the dining room renovation. We also would like at this time to upgrade the HVAC system. This is a system that's pretty consistent throughout our older school designs of having through-the-wall air conditioning units. We want it, this summer, we are renovating and we already have that approved and the money available for that for Discovery School. We feel this would be a good time to make that same change. What happens is, we improve the, the quality of the classroom, the noise level is gone because this is a, a built-in system that comes through vents just like you would have in your home and we'd be able to put a window in the area where the existing HVAC unit comes through. The scheduled date of completion with that, of the second phase, would be for the next school year, August, August 2013. We hope to be able to finalize the first phase by August of 2012. So those, those are, as one project, but two different phases of the one project.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson on this? Ms. Phillips?
My comment is that I've always been heartily in support of maintaining our older facilities in as pristine a condition as we possibly can because it's good for the, it's good for the kids, it's good for the teachers, it's good for the community, it's just, and it's good for our system because, you know, healthy schools help have healthy kids and so, and that's one thing I'd just like to say and I wanted to thank you for your work, Mr. Anderson, on that.
Thank you.
Will entertain a motion?
So move.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, we haven't done this in a while, call the roll. Thank you.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The third item on this is an elevator for Bradley Elementary. Bradley, as you know, is the only two-story school design that we have. We currently do not have an elevator. We have a situation and if a child has, has suffered a broken leg or something, we have to move their whole classroom downstairs because they can't get up the stairs. For ADA compliance, we would like to add an elevator to that school and our estimated cost at this time is $250,000 to bring it within the ADA compliances.
Mr. Campbell?
Any idea where in that building that elevator would be located?
Yes, sir, we have gone out there with, with the architect and we've gone out there with the company that, that does this to get an idea and the place where it would be is, as you're coming down the main hall, heading towards the older part, it makes a, a turn right there on an angle, well, as you get past that, there's windows out there that look out to the back, right there is the place where we can catch both stories at the same place and not interfere with anything on the inside. So that would be it.
And where the, there are stairs there now?
The stairs would be to, as you face the elevator from inside the building, the stairs are to the right, it's a little further down.
Where the old library was.
Ms. Smith?
Okay, I get $250,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I mean, is there, that's just how much it is?
It's how much it is. We have to put in, obviously, a commercial-grade elevator and we would have to have, have it just put in, retrofitted, so we have to cut through walls and we have to dig down into the ground to make it work and put in the right equipment to make it happen.
Mr. Campbell?
But this is estimated cost. It could be higher, it could be lower, am I correct?
It could be either way. We've asked-
On all of these?
On all of them, yes, sir. We've asked them to try to be as reasonable as possible as they can on the cost because we don't like to bring surprises back, so we would like them to have very close to the actual retail price.
Do we have an architect that designs all of this or do we have to put out and get bids from the architectural firms for each one of these projects?
Okay, any project over $50,000, I believe that's the benchmark, you have to have an architect for. We have, the school district for years has been using Johnson &amp; Bailey, they are familiar with all of our schools and they, at, at the next work session, we're gonna ask you to look at approval of that. Since it's a professional service, state law does not require us to bid it out as a formal bid. We would go through the architectural firm who would then conduct the formal bidding process, but us hiring an architect does not require a bid process.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Andrews?
Just a comment, they've really kind of been on-call for the system for years and have helped us and given us advice from time to time, helped the, the director of schools with decisions and, you know, just little questions and answers for nothing, so, and they've already, you know, they've already been out there and helped and, and that's not, that's not on any kind of guarantee that we're gonna pay them for that help, but they've really been gracious to do that for us through the years.
Yes, they're very, very good for us to work with this district since they have all of our building stuff and we need something, we can get it very quickly and get answers, so yes, they're very good.
Okay, will entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Are there any that oppose? Thank you.
And I forgot to mention to you, this one should be done over the summer, so be ready for the next school year. The next item is portable classrooms for Scales. Scales is right now a little bit over capacity, we need a bridge to get to the opening of the new school. We have estimated to install four portable classrooms for two academic years so, so they can get the building constructed. We did this rather than the option of moving some students out there for two years and then sending them right back. Obviously, no one really likes portables, but we thought this would be the best way not to intrude on students' lives and parents' lives having to move them away and back, so that's why we're asking you for your consideration of two, I mean, I'm sorry, four portable classrooms to put on the Scales campus.
Ms. Duggan, Mr. Campbell and Dr. Andrews?
Where on the grounds will those be?
We have gone out and looked at two locations. One is as you face the building to the right-hand side, next to the gym, there's a large, flat area there. The other is directly behind the school in the circular, in that drive around back, as you look, as you first come into that drive to the left-hand side, next to the school, between the school and the drive and then there's a ball field passed on the other side. We find that because of drainage ditches on the other side of the campus, those are really the only two areas that we feel we have the space to put the, put the portals.
Of those two locations, in your opinion, which location is the safest for our children?
I think either one's gonna be safe because they're not crossing any, any traffic or anything like that. Either one works fine for us.
Because I'm not a fan of portables and I, I understand why we're doing this and I think we're making that decision for the right reason because to dislocate people for two years and move them back is not good either, but I just, I hate having to do this, but I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
I've had some experience with those as you have too. Today, do portables have to be on an asphalt surface?
What we'll do is put a foundation in and run, we have to run concrete sidewalks and we have to run- we have to run ramps and we have to make them all ADA compliant. We have to put in fire, fire alarms. We have to put in communications between the front and the back. We have to hook up all of the technology for it. So, it's pretty involved and they would be secured down through, they have put pilings in the ground, put foundation into it.
But it doesn't have to be on an asphalt surface?
No, not on that. It, it could be but where we're sitting it is probably not, you know, I'll, I'll lean on the architect to help me on that but I, we, we have talked about the other way.
Now, will these portables be new portables? Will they be used portables? And what size?
That's a great question. We're looking at a regular classroom size. Our classrooms right now are between 800 and 1,000 square feet. So, we're looking for that size for each one of the classrooms. Are they new or used? We'll have the option to look at the cost on, on either one of those. Actually, the leasing cost is very close on both of those. The purchasing cost is way different but we would be leasing these for a short time. But we'll look at the condition of those.
Will they have restroom facilities in the portables?
No. We didn't plan to do that because then we are running into all kinds of utility issues of running plumbing. So, one of the considerations we're making is the closeness to an exterior door and closest to public facility restroom.
Dr. Andrews?
How much strain will this put on the core facilities at Scales? The gym and the cafeteria?
Cafeteria will be fine by extending the lunch period like 10 minutes because they take two classrooms every five minutes. So, that, that would be fine. Libraries is a scheduling thing I think they'll be fine on and really the gymnasium part, I'm sure they'll work it into the rest of the building. I don't, I don't see this one as much as a problem. My bigger concern is making sure that they have adequate restroom facilities to get to in a relatively quick time and the distance that they have to travel, whether we need to make sure they're covered and protected in any kind of rain or anything like that. So, that's really what I'm worried about, making sure we got that taken care of.
Do we need to hire more teachers or we're going to make classes smaller with what we've got or?
At this point, I was anticipating we'd have to hire more teachers because we expect more students there.
Okay.
Ms. Smith and then Ms. Phillips?
I'm right with Ms. Duggan. I'm very much opposed to portables, as you know, but I just want everyone else to realize that it's a two-year lease. A two-year lease and that's it.
That's it. We're, we're not purchasing, we're leasing.
And I'm really concerned about the portables and Scales being in like a tornado alley. So, first thing is that we need to have a plan. I'm sure they would but it, in that spot in particular, I'm very concerned, I think you're right, to try to get it as close to the doors and access as, as easily, as easy access as we can have, so.
Ms. Phillips?
Well, I was just thinking that this is something we all agree on. Nobody likes portables and, but we don't like moving large, you know, moving segments of children and then moving them back and disrupting families even more than we don't like portables. So, it's the lesser of two evils and we just, you know, the good thing is that we know that it's, it's finite. You know, it's not going to last forever. As you were pointing out, it's just, it's a two-year proposition as we get our new school built and so that's going to be exciting. It'll be exciting and it'll be great for the kids not to have to, you know, pick up and move and then move again. So, that's all.
Certainly, I have faith in Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Anderson and the staff at Scales that anything that comes across this board, and we've brought up some good things, that they have thought of it first. And when it comes to a tornado, I don't know how much we estimate where it's going to be because certainly it is it in spots that maybe we thought it never would but all over town. But I know from past experiences, the least of things that come up, the school system and the staff at these schools are ready. And I know Dr. Gilbert and her staff are ready and prepared. So, I won't let that worry me right now because I know they've got that in hand. I'm worried more about the projects and the money because I know everything else is taken care of. And we're going to entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the lease of the portables.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, if you'll call the roll, please.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
And Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do appreciate the time the staff has spent on this and also the time that you all have spent looking at this to, to try to come up with the best solution. So, thank you very much for that. Board policies.
Okay, you have before you on first reading, board policies. The first one is Board Policy IS-1 on Professional Development and Growth. The only change to this policy is changing Department of Instruction to Coordinator of Curriculum. Do you have any questions or comments on this policy?
I move we approve the policy on first reading.
Okay. Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Are there any that oppose, a sign of nay? All right. Thank you.
The second policy you have before you on first reading tonight is Board Policy IS-2, Curriculum Development. There have been some changes in this policy relative, again, Department of Instruction was changed to Coordinator of Curriculum. Lines 13 and 14, it was added that it states Tennessee curriculum is available on State Department website and teachers will be provided in-service on accessing its content. And lines 16 through 19 were deleted with that replacement. And also in line 22, the words principal and coordinator of curriculum replaced Department of Instruction. Do you have any questions or comments regarding these changes?
I had one question. Um, the, I can't, I can't find that policy for some reason but the curriculum standards are available online, is that what it says? And that the teachers will be provided in-service on accessing its content. How were they supported in accessing the content before?
The, before?
Before this policy?
Before, what, what was happening at that time is you had the hard copies. That was the time when you didn't have the access to technology as you have now and they were, they were typically, now it is, it is standard that they're going to be on that state website and that allows them to change when they change. For example, when we moved to core content standards, which we already have in some of our grade levels across the state, that enables the change to happen right away and so that way teachers can pull it up on their laptops immediately. And that's, that's just, I guess as much as anything, it's really in the change of times that have occurred where, where we've moved from hard copy and things that may not be accessible to every teacher so that now that you have, have them accessible to every teacher on the laptop.
You feel pretty sure that our teachers are going to all access them?
Oh, absolutely. They, they are readily and always used because that is something that now is expected in lesson plans and, and something that's, we're constantly trained on and we're, with the development especially of PLCs where we're taking those and, and taking those standards and deciding what are our power standards, that's something that it's just automatic, is, is common as a textbook.
Right, right. Thank you.
Is there a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight for first reading is Board Policy IS-3, Basic Instructional Program. The changes that have been made to this policy are that in addition to, the curriculum shall include those subjects required by Tennessee Code Annotated, the language and the Tennessee State Board of Education has been added and the, the area science has been added to the list. It previously was not in the list. And in line 17, the term research-based instructional strategies has been added to the policy. Are there any questions or comments?
I move we approve this policy on first reading.
There a second?
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy IS-4, Special Education. It is just merely updating some of the language in the policy, not really any significant changes in this policy. Are there any comments or questions?
I move we accept this one on first reading.
Second.
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next policy that you have before you is Board Policy IS-5, Instructional Resources. Again, these are very minor changes to this policy. In line 12, you'll see that Ann Southern Association of Colleges and Schools has been deleted. It is reading that personnel and resources should adhere to the regulations of the Tennessee Department of Education and also the term Department of Instruction has been changed to Coordinator of Curriculum. Are there any comments or questions?
Ms. Duggan?
On number two, since it says regulations, is that not a place where it should say Tennessee Board of Education versus Department of Education or should it include both of those?
The regulations are adopted and implemented by both the Tennessee Board of Education and the Tennessee Department of Education.
I know the department is the one responsible for fulfilling it.
Well, and the commissioner has authority to implement regulations in addition to the board.
Mr. Campbell?
Just for everybody's knowledge, and we discussed this at our meeting a couple of weeks ago, would you please explain why we're deleting Southern Association of Colleges and Schools?
Yes, and I'd like to, Karen Hawkins, if you want to address this, I can address it but, but you deal with it. So, I'm going to let you address that one.
When we go through accreditation process, that process is changed. It's actually, Southern Association for College and School has merged with a group called Advanced Ed. And so, when they come in and look at our services and our program, in the past, it was very much lined up with how many books we should have, how many, you know, how much class space and those are all incorporated into standards, broad, they look at much broader standards now. So, we feel like that probably a much more rigorous would be to adhere to the regulations of the Tennessee Department of Education. So, it's, it's a different process for accreditation. We will still be accredited and we will be accredited across the district when we go through that process.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Phillips?
When do you expect us to go through that process?
Next year.
Next year.
Get ready.
Now, I remember what the Southern Association was like and as a matter of fact though, they did cover some other topics besides facilities and books and pencils and things like that. So, it was, it was a pretty rigorous evaluation, as I remember, when we, because we, no, we, we stopped doing it school by school and did it as a system, so.
If there are no other questions, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
Seconded.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
The next policy before you for first reading is Board Policy IS-10, Community Resource Persons. The change made to this policy you'll find in line six through nine. The sentence, the administrative staff shall collaborate with each principal on utilization of community resources has replaced the prior sentence that had, that stated each principal should study the needs of the principal's individual school, survey the resources available in the school community and weigh their probable usefulness. Are there any questions or comments to this policy?
Ms. Smith?
I just want to clarify, it means collaborate, it doesn't mean that they have to check in when, with, the principal can approve outsourced, uh, community resources coming in, correct? Or do they have to get it confirmed?
Yes, but it's, but what you're going to find is, it's really, this, this puts the burden on the principal and certainly the principals are going to be collaborating with other groups. But, but what it really takes is a district-wide approach to it so that you don't have, what can easily happen is you can have 12 different schools go into the same source for, for help. I think with this and, and I'll, Karen, you may want to address this because the instruction staff did this and made this recommendation, but my guess is that, that your, your idea was that we would be taking a look at this from a broader spectrum and, and accessing really more resources by doing that than you would if you were leaving it up to the individual schools. But I'm, I'm going to let you speak to that if you, if you want.
Well, I, when we were looking at this policy, one of the things that we noticed about it is that it put a lot of the burden on the schools to actually study the community, find the resources, survey and find all of those pieces. And we felt like that if it was a collaboration between administration, that we could help schools find the resources they need and so that was our intent. Our, certainly our intent was not to say that if you find a resource that could work for your building, that we weren't going to approve it. The intent was that we would collaborate and open doors for more opportunities.
So, for example, if, if a parent in a class was expert on sea turtles or some topic, they could go ahead and ask that parent to come in and talk?
Absolutely.
Without getting approval from the city school's office?
Absolutely. And then if you, if you look at this, the administrative staff, the principal ultimately is going to be the one to make that decision and teachers have, they've always invited people into their classrooms. So, no, that would, that was not the intent. And if you feel like we need to look at the wording to make sure that's not the intent, then, you know, we're happy to do that.
Ms. Phillips and then Mr. Campbell?
Speaking of wording, this first sentence, I have so much fun with this. "The board shall reserve for itself the function of providing guides for the discretionary action of those to whom it delegates authority."
Where are you?
Are you on BO-10?
No, ma'am. We're on IS-5 still.
IS-10?
Mm-hmm. 10, yeah.
Okay, so the 10, the 10 confused me. Okay, okay. Okay, that makes more sense to me. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Campbell?
Karen, just to make sure that we, I understand anyway, the resource person has got to be approved by the school principal in order to come into the building, no matter if it's a, that's what Ms. Smith said, if it's a parent going to a class, that principal has still got to know about it before that occurs. Am I correct?
I, I don't know that we have anything that stipulates that. I would assume that that would be the case and I, I haven't even thought about putting that into administrative directive because it's just, that's just something I assume is going to happen. Any, any, that principal is ultimately responsible for the school and so it's, it would be my assumption that if Ms. Smith's going to have Ms. Jones into her class, then she's probably going to let the principal know if for no other reason than come down and visit the class, well, well, that person's there. I, the, the schools are autonomous in what they do. Now, ultimately, they've got to come under Murfreesboro City Schools because they're part of the school system. But as far as, as speakers come into their classrooms, as far as resources come into their classrooms, that's going to be left up to that principal unless it becomes burdensome on the principal and then usually I hear about it. And, and sometimes I'm going to work with that principal to help, help that principal out with, with saying what needs to be said. But, but I don't want the board to think that, that we are in any way putting handcuffs on principals as far as what they're able to do in their schools or on teachers. I do think that it is important and what we have asked them to do is if we're going to have intentional instruction, which we do have, is that we need to look at the standards and see what's being taught. But to not use the resources that we have when we have said that one of the key things that we're going to do in the school system is to develop partnerships would be foolish and would be totally counter to what we have said we would do.
One.
So, at this time, at this time, I'm assuming that the teachers are talking to the principals about who they're having in their classrooms. As far as any administrative directive out there that says that has to happen, I don't know of one. Now, it's certainly up to the principals to make that decision within their own building and to say to teachers, if you're going to have someone come in your classroom, I want to be aware of it and I think that's fair because they are responsible, the principal is responsible for who comes into that classroom and into that school building.
Dr. Andrews?
I think this policy says all community resource persons must be approved by the principal. Now, now who you're going to call a community resource person, if it's a parent, that's a parent, in my opinion, you know, if a parent's coming into the classroom. But I guess if it's some- But I guess if it's someone who doesn't have another role in the school system, then the principal needs to know about it, it sounds like. And that, that may be buried somewhere in administrative directives. I would guess it may be.
I think, I think the key with this particular sentence has to do with the folks who are coming in, would have to do with volunteers, with this idea of the supervision of the professional staff of the school. Because that is something that we do want. And you're right, in many ways, a parent obviously is going to have, we may look at them differently than we would look at someone who's coming in to just volunteer, but nevertheless, I think the key is that supervision of the professional staff of the school.
Ms. Phillips, and then Ms. Campbell.
Was that a follow-up question? You go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, no, no, no. No, no, she wants you to go ahead.
My point, and I'm not, I'm not against resources, I'm all in favor of it. But I do believe that it, that the principal should know, I don't care whether it's my brother, my mother coming into the building, the principal should know when visitors are coming in the building to go to a classroom. And whether or not we've got to say that's mandated or whether we're going to assume, and sometimes, you know, what happens when you assume.
And I think with your policy, you spelled that out in 11 and 12.
This is first reading, so we can discuss it more later.
Right, and I think, I think you've, no, I think you have it there.
I'm hearing some possibly, I don't know, slightly conflicting things. I don't know, that, that we want, we don't want to micromanage in our policy. And at the same time, we want to make sure that the principal has advanced information about what's going on in her school and for the safety of the kids, you know, for the safety of the kids. Can it be addressed in some way, differently in the policy, Ms. Baker?
That issue is addressed in our visitors to the schools policy. That's as far as the safety and who's coming in the building and knowing and who is there and that they have to sign in. So that safety issue is addressed through that policy at this time. We also have, are developing the volunteer requirements for more formalized volunteers that are coming into the system on a regular basis. And those would be classified, there may be various categories of volunteers between distinguishing a parent of students in the building from someone that would be considered a community resource person that is coming in and does not have any child in the building. So that's a, that's a different issue and different policy where those issues would be addressed.
So this policy really isn't dealing with the safety of that, of the students. It's more addressing the authority of the principal? Is that what it's addressing?
This policy is encouraging principals and administrative staff to reach out to community resources and individuals to help come into the system and supplement the curriculum and information that's being provided to the students.
Okay, so would a parent have to be approved by the principal?
I think possibly that is what is confusing here. Maybe we need to put a definition of community resource person. I didn't envision a community resource person encompassing a parent. It's more the thought of trying to pull in people from local banks to help show with the banks that we do in the schools, to help teach the children how to manage money. And pulling in maybe some of our healthcare professionals to provide information to the students on healthcare issues. Or during the, I know lawyers in the community will come in during the First Amendment week and maybe give some information to students on those issues. That's really what I believe this policy is envisioning, is trying to pull on those type of community resources as opposed to individual parents coming in to help their child's classroom. So possibly this policy can be revised to more clearly define who is envisioned as a community resource person.
That might be helpful. And also then, some kind of caveat for days like Read Across America, where we're going to have a lot of community resource persons within our schools reading.
But they would know that. That would already have been proved.
But, I mean, do you approve each person? Or do you have to have a list of, I mean, do they have to turn in lists to say, you know, all these people are coming in my classroom every day? I just want to make sure that we don't, we don't make it, you know, make people have to jump through needless hoops, I guess. But at the same time, assuring the authority of the principal for major resource things, like you were talking about banking and healthcare issues and First Amendment week. I mean, you know, that's, that might be a little different than Read Across America Day. And you're going to have a lot of people in that building on Read Across America Day that are not parents, you know.
If we could, if we could get this one more focused on instruction, I think.
I think we'll be.
Dr. Andrews.
Maybe those kinds of questions could be handled under maybe the administrative directive that would verify some of that perhaps?
Yeah, but I don't like to vote for a policy yet that, I don't want to approve a policy, oh, on the last reading, that, that is not clear. So that's just me.
Ms. Campbell.
I'll make a motion that we pass this on first reading, knowing that we're going to discuss it more at our work session.
Good.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next policy before the board is Board Policy IS-13, A Statement of Homework Policy, and I'll let Ms. Hawkins discuss this.
Really, the only changes that we made in this is that we said that all homework shall be received by the teacher making the assignment and that academic feedback be given for the student's efforts. And by academic feedback, we mean that they would reference the standards that students were working toward and help them make the next step to improve that product. So it could be in the form of a grade, or it could be just information about the assignment to give them feedback. And that's one of the things that we changed there. Another thing that we made, another change we made, that we said that homework shall not require the use of reference materials not readily available in most homes. And so those, we felt like that teachers could make accommodations for their students when they're working on long-term projects in the classroom. And we want to make sure that they're not penalized based on the resources they have in their homes.
Ms. Campbell.
No.
Okay, all righty. Make a motion, we move on first reading?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the last policy before you on first reading is Board Policy IS-14. It deals with promotion and retention.
With this policy, this is pretty much a rewrite of a policy, the policy that we had before. And the intent of this policy is that we want to make sure that as a school district, that we do everything we can for students before we can, before we resort to retention. That really should be our last resort for students. So when we're considering retention, this policy spells out several things that we would consider. And one of the things would be mastery of essential competencies. Those would be the standards that we're required to teach and the likelihood that they would be successful at the next grade level. We want to make sure that retention is not used as a disciplinary action. We want to consider always previous retentions, except under unusual circumstances, students may not be retained more than once. We would consider definitely teacher input, and they would use lots of data to help make this decision. Documentation and supplemental interventions and progress that students are making toward those standards would be considered. Grade level guidelines, we would look at those. We also want to make sure that that we document what we're doing and what kind of changes that we would make for that student the following year. So it's not, would not be good enough just to say, well, we're going to keep them in third grade, again. We want to make sure that if we retain them and we keep them in third grade, that we've actually made some changes that could improve their chances of performing the next year. And then also, this outlines the new Tennessee code that describes that students in third grade shall not be promoted to the next grade unless the student has shown a basic understanding of their curriculum and their ability to perform with reading. And this could be measured in the, in the form of grades and/or TCAP scores as well. And if those students could be promoted to the next grade if they participate in a research-based intervention. So those are the changes for this policy.
Thank you, ma'am.
I can tell that a great deal of consideration for the needs of the child has gone into this, formulating this policy, and I thank you. I'd like to suggest one thing. We have teacher input that we would consider. I'd like to also add a line about considering parental and/or guardian input in the decision.
I believe it's in here, number six. That the, in the grade level guidelines and arriving at a decision for either promotion or retention of a pupil, the combined views of teachers, principal, director of schools, or designee are taken into consideration, along with those of the parents.
Now, that's number six?
Correct, correct, number six. Line thirty-two to thirty-four. This also, even with all of those considerations, the final decision rests with the school personnel. And that's consistent with what we've had before.
It says.
Okay.
I'd just like to see a little more attention given to it in the policy. I'd like it to be fleshed out a little bit. Because we have, you know, it's fleshed out for the teachers, and that's very important, but it's not fleshed out for the parent or guardian. I just would like to see it fleshed out a little bit.
Dr. Andrews.
And thirty-eight through forty-two, it does talk about that the parents will be notified in writing as soon as there's a thought that, that retention could be, is being considered. And that there would be, need to be a conference to talk with the parents then. And that the parents are notified again at least nine weeks before the end of the school year. I, I think, I think that's, I think that's pretty good for a policy, you know, fairly fleshed out.
I, well, my, my thoughts on it were that, you know, we talk about making the family, parents, part of our education equation. And just, and the words notifying them, that's like, okay, this is the information. That doesn't mean that there's a dialogue happening. I mean, I'm sure that there would be in most cases, but if we're going to have a policy, I'd like that dialogue to be spelled out a little clearer. Just be, I mean, the word notified, I mean, if we're going straight by what's in the policy, it's like, this is the information, this is what's being done. I don't, I don't see in the policy that it reflects or gives any, that it reflects the parents' contribution or, or, except for on the line, you know, that one line, line thirty.
Thirty-two. It talks about the combined views.
The combined views. I just would like to see the parents' rights or the guardians' rights fleshed out or a little bit in this.
Maybe, maybe to add something where it says the need to schedule a conference to discuss each student's need for improvement. Maybe, but then again, that, that, that the parents' input will be valued or something.
I would like to see that, because I just think, you know, sometimes we can get, if we're, if we go strictly by the policy.
Ms. Campbell.
Karen, what we're looking at here in that Tennessee code annotated, in that state law?
That the final decision rests within the school, correct?
So could we just flesh out and just have a little italicized heading that would say, "Parents' rights"?
Or parent involvement in the decision.
Parent involvement. And just put, just, even if it's already been said, just say it again. I think that would be, would that be acceptable?
That would, that would make me happy, and I think that would make, I think that would make the parents happy, too.
Could I get a motion that we will bring this back to our policy?
Someone.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Under reports and information, I'd like to bring Lisa Trail up to give you a communications update, please.
Hello. I need to pull up a PowerPoint real quick.
Didn't I see you on TV today as Linda?
You did see me on TV today, depending on which TV.
Didn't they call you Linda?
No, Dr. Clark was with me, so they could have called me Linda. They could have got our names transcribed.
I think they had Linda, Linda Trail.
How disappointed will my dad be? Okay, well, I'll just have to call them and correct that. Maybe you'll see me there tomorrow as well. Good afternoon, and happy school board week. I hope you've enjoyed your goodies, the schools worked really hard on that. I have a quick communications update. First of all, we have to congratulate our 2011 basketball champions, because we do have some great basketball players in our schools, some great cheerleaders, and we want to take time to acknowledge them. Bradley Academy, they were the boys' champions, and I think they actually had an undefeated year. Is that right, Ralph? Okay. And then Kason Lane Academy, they were the girls' champions. So if you have time, send them a little note and say, "Congratulations." And it was a good year, lots of great sportsmanship, and it's good for the kids to have that competitive spirit. As far as outreach and partners, I'm going to be giving you a communications update, but realize that there's a lot of people who are doing these things. It's not coming under my department, I'm just simply reporting to you and helping them out as I can. Murfreesboro City Schools Arts Competition, which is sponsored by the City Arts Commission, is scheduled for February 14th through March 24th. The artwork will be exhibited out here in the rotunda. The art teachers have been working all year, trying to get all this artwork together. And they will submit two projects per school, and then they'll be, two projects per grade. And it will be displayed, and there is a great little commission that comes together and gives them lots of little rewards and tokens and all that kind of stuff to the individuals as well as the schools. The mayor's celebration of this day is March 1st, and again, it is in the rotunda. We also have a life skills class that, pardon me?
I just wanted to say that it makes me think of Lon Newell. He'd be just thrilled about the arts contest going on.
That is very true.
I still miss him on the board.
That is very true, so. And, you know, we have kids in our schools, we have great basketball players, we have great artists. It's, it's nice for them to be able to display their work in a public place. And the city does a great job of allowing us to kind of have an exhibit hall here. Greenhouse Life Skills, this is a project that's going on through our outreach team and Greenhouse Ministries. They are providing our parents with a four-week series of classes for women. It'll be held in five locations throughout our school district. They are great classes, have been really thought out, and I think the parents who attend will find them to be just a wonderful opportunity to learn and build relationships. We also had our MTSU baseball clinic, we had over 100 students to participate. They were fabulous. MTSU was just a great host. They opened Murphy Center to us, we were there all morning long. We had well over 100 kids participate. They had individual hands-on coaching from the players as well as the coaches. And then they had an opportunity at the end to have their baseball signed, to really get to know the players. It was a fun day to be a part of, and the kids really got a great experience. Some kids came with their baseball uniforms on, some kids was very parent. This may have been the first time they did. have been the first time they did any baseball. So, it was nice to see a cross-section from all of our schools attend that. MTSU, you know, we continue to talk about the partnership, and it seems to just keep building and building. The athletic department has really stepped forward and done a lot with our students. We just completed our soccer clinic. I think we talked about that at one of the board meetings. We had over 200 kids at our soccer clinic. That was hosted by MTSU at their outdoor soccer clinic. The weather was wonderful. And we also worked with the Hispanic Soccer League here in Murfreesboro to combine those three, so it was three of us together to produce a really great team. Our coordinated school health department is awesome. They are really thinking of things we can do to keep these kids moving healthy on Saturdays, on evenings, during the day. It's, it's great. And then the other part of it is that MTSU's sports players have adopted a school, so every school has at least one team, some have more than one team. That, that's their team, that's their go-to team. And you'll see them in their schools during, usually during their off-season, but sometimes during their on-season as well. So, we love our MTSU partners. There's also an African-American cultural event coming up. We will have two events. This is the first for this. One is at Bellwood on February 23rd. The other is at Bradley on February 24th. It is open to the communities. And this is being led by a team of our parents and our outreach team to pull something together that we haven't had before, so we're really looking forward to that. And they are going to be having a soul food cook-off, so I'd say the food is going to be awesome. I also want to make sure we talk about our City Schools Foundation. They are doing such great work for our city schools, and they have just awarded $30,000 in parity grants to our schools. Hobgood, Mitchell Nielsen, Black Fox, Bradley, Pittard, and Northville were recipients this year. This is based on a very great calculated method of looking at which schools have the most need. So, we appreciate our City Schools Foundation for that. They are also giving us grants to our teachers on a regular basis. They did give a grant not too long ago to Ms. Mall for robotics, a computer in the classroom for robotics. They have another big grant that has just been awarded. In fact, we just received it in the warehouse today, which is going to go out to all schools, which is a heart, it's kind of science and school health all together. So, learning the, how the heart works, learning how to understand heart disease, also learning how exercise is going to make a difference in your life. So, we'll kind of roll that out next time. And with that said, the City Schools Foundation can't give us money if they don't make a little money, so we want to take the time to invite you, and you should have already received invitations, but invite the public as well to the City, to the Excellence in Education 5. The City Schools Foundation event is February the 10th. It is honoring John Hood. He is being roasted, as you can see by our little photo. And the event emcee is going to be Andy Walmack. So, it will be a lot of fun. We hope you are there. It should be a great success. And that's it.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Trail, and thank you also to Leslie Etherly, who they've both been working very diligently on everything, but also for the City Schools Foundation. And I also want to thank the sponsors for the event this year. We have over $60,000 committed in sponsorship dollars for this year, and that is before we've even sold a ticket. So, and all of the money goes directly to the schools, which $300,000 have gone directly to the city schools from the City Schools Foundation in the last six years. So, thank you, and thank you, sponsors and the community.
Thank you.
Any questions for, for Lisa?
She's just doing an awesome job.
I wanted you to get an idea of what she's doing. I thought it was important for you to understand the work that she's doing, so.
Thank you.
Speaking of work...
Next on the agenda, so I'm just going to stay here, if that's okay with you. I think I am next on for the inclement weather policy. So, I think I get to present this because I'm the one who makes the call to the kids. I make the kids' day whenever we get to close our schools. The inclement weather policy, mostly known as our snow day policy, how that works is our goal is to make sure that the kids are safe, our goal is to make sure the staff is safe. We want to make those decisions early, if at all possible. We want to call you at 6:00 at night or 7:00 at night and make those news stations happy, but sometimes that's not possible. But I kind of just wanted to give you an idea of what goes on during those days, and I've just got to experience my first one, so I was a little nervous about it. We kept our school open. I think it was a good decision. It was a beautiful day that day, it ended up being. But several things go on simultaneously, and they're always, it's continual. We were watching the weather. We are looking for reports. Dr. Gilbert and Larry Williford, who is over our supervisor of our maintenance department, are really hand-in-hand on this. They, Larry's doing everything from measuring the surface air to measuring the ground temperature to make sure if it's sleet, snow, ice, is it going to stick, is it not going to stick. We're working with the police officers, police dispatch. They're giving us good advice on what they're seeing out there, especially when it's the 4:00 AM in the morning and who, who's out and about. Well, I can tell you, Dr. Gilbert is out and about, because she calls me. And so, it's everything that goes together. We're looking at bridges, we're looking at road conditions, but we also go, and Larry is excellent about this as well and his maintenance crew, they're going to the parking lots, they're going to the sidewalks, they're looking at what our kids are going to have to take, be, be dealing with that day, whether they're getting off a school bus or whether they're just riding with their parents. So, when they look at that, obviously Murfreesboro's pretty large, there are some schools that are going to have more snow or more ice than others. If that is, if we're in school, they're going to go to those schools first. They're going to de-ice. If Bellwood has hit worse, Bellwood's a top priority. If it's over the other end of the county and it's Kason Lane, then that's where we're going to be. So, they are really doing an awesome job in making sure those kids are safe, they're not going to slip, they're not going to slide. And again, Dr. Gilbert's talking with her principal, she's talking with Larry. We're hopefully making good decisions on whether to keep school open or keep school closed. Now, if we do close school, that's where my job kicks in. Beforehand, nothing, I don't, I don't have any say. After school is closed, we do have an entire snow policy on who we call. We do call all the media, we work with Channel 3. They are doing an awesome job. They get texts and emails from me in the middle of the morning and put it on air. So, if you want to know if school is open, there's going to be a way of you finding out if school is open or if school is closed. We also do an all-call to our transportation department first, to our parents, our teachers, and our kids, so that they know school is open or school is closed. Well, actually, only if school is closed. We don't call them if school is open, because they're going to hopefully make that assumption every morning that it's open. The only major thing, and it's really not major, it's kind of just a minor change in our snow weather, snow days, is the ESP department, and they have come together to try to make a better day for those ESP kids. They're doing a lot more programming during snow days, they're getting ready for snow days, and they're going to combine some schools, because it's a lot easier to program for 30 or 40 kids than to program for three or four. So, during the inclement weather, the schools will be condensed down to locations, and all of the ESP parents have received the notification. The principals know it. Hopefully, whenever it happens, it'll be a really easy transition, and they'll find that they have a great day at school that day, except through ESP. So, any questions? Anything I left out?
Ms. Smith.
I actually had a teacher make one request, and that is, when Rutherford County is out, if you could ask the Channel 3 to put, "Murfreesboro City Schools are open." If they are out, if that, in that situation, because there's always that question that's in the mix, but the new plan's great, but if you could add that, that would be...
Absolutely, and actually, they did that this time. They did that running across the screen, and that Murfreesboro City Schools is open. They are awesome to work with, so I'm sure they would not mind that at all. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Your personnel update is under Tab 5, your revenue and expenditure report, Tab 6, and then attendance, Mr. Anderson.
On the monthly revenue expenditure report, where there's two months in here, I'll just go to the December one, since that's the most current one. The sales tax collections and the property tax collections are lagging behind a little bit. The, the report ending in December means that's only sales tax through October. We don't have the November or December, so we don't have the holiday push on sales tax, and we're hoping for a big holiday push this year. The collection on property tax is a little slower, but that always tends to come in at the end of the year now, so we're not concerned with that. Revenue-wise, we're at 40% revenue. We're at the 50% part of the year, and as always, it comes in up through February and March is when we get our, our biggest increases in that. On the expense side, we're at 48.5% of expenditures of the 50% part of the year, so we, we're okay on that one right now as well. There's one real big one I wanted to call your attention to, actually two on the expense. One is 72310, which is Board of Education. If you remember last month, I reported to you that that one is tremendously greater than the previous year, and that's because we got our workers' comp bill for the whole district earlier than normal, and it was over $300,000, and that's why that one is showing that kind of number. The other big one is the regular capital outlay, the last line on it. That one is, is more, and that's because when we book the expenditure, what that is is for the Energy Efficiency Schools Initiative, the matching amount of money we had to put in. Well, when we book it, we had you approve it beforehand last year, but it didn't hit our books until this year, and we have to show it as an expense first, so that's why that one is out of line there. You take those two bigger, bigger ones out, and we're right in line where we should be at this time for the year. That's the, that's the expenditures and revenues. Any question on that? Okay, the attendance report, as I mentioned earlier, we are up a total of 237 students over last year at this time, and this report is through the 20-day period, which is the fourth month of school, which ended December 7th. And we're up 189 over our budgeted amount. So, as a school district, we're at 7,039 students, not counting all of our, all of our pre-case students that's on top of that. Our PTR ratio, pupil-teacher ratio for K through 3 is standing at 18.89, and 4 through 6, it's 20.82, and our district average is 19.60. Our attendance for the, for the month was at 95.7. Last year, at that same month, it was 95.8, so we're right on, on target there in our attendance. So, things look good on our enrollment numbers for this year so far, and January, actually, I understand, has some more increases for us for next month.
Ms. Duggan.
I'd just like to thank you and Dr. Gilbert for being proactive in talking to Jim Tracy and Joe Carr concerning the legislation that proposes raising class size. I just, we all need to be aware of that. That is not a good thing. I'd increase our numbers within classes, and we know that that will have a direct, tremendous impact on funding, and that's a grave concern of mine, is the impact it will have on our budgets in the future if that cap is raised to 25 and to 30 and 35. When we look at our numbers here, you know, per teacher-pupil ratio, they're very good, and we've worked hard to keep them like that. And if all that happens, I really don't know how financially we can continue to do that.
It will be challenging.
Just a ditto on that comment, yeah.
One other thing is at your place tonight, should be the audit report. We weren't going to go through this tonight, because we will have a full presentation next month by the, by the firm that does our audit. Crossland Baden will be here. Just wanted to give, give it to you so you could review it over the time. It is a very good report. It speaks very well of the district financial department and what the ladies have done, so we're very proud of it, but we'll have a full report next month.
Thank you.
If there are no questions, Mr. Anderson, we're down to other business. Is there anything that we need for, other than the reminder about the second Tuesday night, we'll have our policy session again?
Looking forward to having Nancy Renier on the board.
If there's nothing, is anything from any of the board members?
Nope. Second comment, that's all.
We will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We adjourn.